Called to order the public session of the January the 8th meetings of the Richmond Two Board of Trustees. We met at 5:30 in executive session, and at that time we elected officers for this coming year, for 2013. I can't hardly say that word, but 2013, we are here. And Ms. Brill was elected vice chair, Ms. Anderson secretary, and I was elected chairman, and we are officers for this year. Okay, this time, we're going to have, we're going to stand and have a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item number four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second up.
There is a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion on this motion? Changes? Okay, I'll call for the vote at this time. Okay, thank you. The motion passes. This is a new item or way we do business. We're going to have a consent agenda as a board. And there's several items on this agenda which include approval of minutes from our previous meeting, facilities report, update of budget, and ratification of personnel. Now, any time a board member can pull something out of a consent agenda, but if there is no opposition, we're just going to go ahead and vote on these items as one. I want to thank Mr. Jackson for his leadership on this and others, because this is exactly what would be needed, we're needing to do as a school board. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the approval of the consent agenda, Ms. Chairman.
I second that, but question, there's one error I forgot to call you about, and it's just a typo. It said, it should be, it's on the Anna Boyd presentation for tonight. But I was there to call you, but I just got hung up on it. But it's, just note, and I'll note that for the minute so that you can get it changed. It's just a typo.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, we'll vote on that motion. She's not waving, I thought I missed that, because Josh is not waving, she's just voting, okay? Votes approved, seven, no, seven zero. Item six is a student learning report. Dr. Broschu, could you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to call on our chief academic officer, Sue Mallette, to introduce our student learning report.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. Just a little introduction, we are beginning to bring the classroom to the boardroom, and so at your desk or at your site, you should have a copy of the images of school, as well as the design qualities that we're using to design work for students that's meaningful. And each time that we meet, I will add additional topics and verbs or words or terms that will help you to have a better understanding of what we're doing. A larger picture is located for the audience to see, just behind Mr. Garrick and Dr. Washington. We are thrilled tonight to have students from Anna Boyd Elementary Academy, and they're going to present their bucket filling project. And I'm not going to spoil it for them, I want them to be able to come up and talk to you and show you through a video what they have done themselves at Anna Boyd. So at this time, I'd like to call Kelly Johnson, principal, to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Broschu, and other members of the executive staff. On behalf of the Anna Boyd School faculty and staff, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to present some of our work, specifically the bucket filling project and project tuning. At this time, I would like to welcome, of course, two students, two special students, Dashari Wilson and Jalisa Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Dashari Wilson.
And I'm Jalisa Jackson, and I will be filling in for Devon Ross-Coville.
And we are members of the Elementary Academy Design Team. We have prepared a brief video, which includes a glimpse into our bucket filling project and project tuning. At the end of the presentation, we will answer any question you may have.
Hello, my name is Dashari Wilson.
And my name is Devon Ross-Coville.
And we are here to talk about one of our school-wide projects, the bucket filling project. Our school-wide theme is based on a book entitled, How Full Is Your Bucket? It is a creation of the Elementary Academy Design Team. We used collaboration and teamwork to make it. To start off, our principal made, created a group called Elementary Academy Design Team, which was mostly made of fifth graders. And so, we started off with an idea, to pick either through a wide variety of choices. So we chose a play. We were all saying, what are we going to do for the play? And we finally came up with an idea for a situation where there's bullying involved. But if you want to see that, you will have to see the actual finished product.
You're probably wondering, what is a bucket? A bucket is basically like your emotions chart. When it's all the way full, you're happy, and when it's in the middle, you're sad, and if it's all the way down, you're just plain blanking, you don't know what emotion you're explaining. My three design qualities are content substance, affiliation, and product focus. Content and substance is basically what you've learned and what, is basically what you've learned and what you were interested in. What I learned in this, in the process of making this, this production, was that you are always to treat somebody like you'd, like you would want to be treated, and that you, and that you get the experience to work with other students who understand. My second, my second design quality was affiliation. It's basically where you work with your peers, not exactly with a teacher or someone out in, out in the community. A special guest came on Monday, his name was Mr. Boykin. He's a local artist, and he was showing me and my colleague how to transfer your, how to transfer my sadness into the plywood that we're going to transfer it to. My last but not least is product focus, and it's basically the performance or the play. The play is actually, the play is going to turn out very well, and it's, and me and my colleague and all of my other friends, we worked very hard.
Remember, there are only, there are ten, but we mainly focus on six. I'm going to start off with mine, which are choice, affirmation, authen, and authenticity. I'm going to start off with choice. Choice, in the, in the terms of our group, is having to pick from a wide variety of things, like a play, a PowerPoint, a book, a music video, but we chose to do a play. My next one is affirmation. Affirmation means to have positive feedback and constructive criticism. Constructive criticism isn't negative feedback, it's just helping you out, challenging your thinking. Authenticity means to be real. You may think that authenticity is having just a real situation, but it really means to have your real work, work from your heart, work from your brain, and all your work. We were able to have a great time doing our work, even though it's not finished, we'll be looking forward to the, to the actual performance.
Hello, Jeremiah Brand, middle level science at Anna Boyd School.
And I'm Shannon Giff, middle level ELA at Anna Boyd School. And I'm going to share with you a little bit about project tuning. Mr. Brand and I worked on a project together, and in essence, project tuning is exactly what it says, fine tuning a project so that it can meet the needs of all students. The basic premise of project tuning is to be hard on content and soft on the individuals presenting. The most beneficial thing about project tuning is that you really get a chance to fine tune your project and look at it from various areas. Teachers give you feedback of what you can do to make your project better, how it can meet the needs of all learners in the class, how you can better change your project to meet the needs of high-level learners as well as low-level, lower-level learners, so that everyone is truly engaged.
Project tuning was really beneficial for me, I think, because it was really well organized. There was, there was particular segments where you were supposed to give your feedback and supposed to listen. It really helped me to organize my thoughts and to organize just the type of notes that I was able to take for, for the ways that the project should, should change. I came with a, with a project in mind, and I had, had some general ideas, but it turned out changing a lot. Some of the things that we were able to do is we were able to talk about the importance of having the choice for all of our students, we were able to talk about, you know, some of the various, various issues that we might, might come up with, the, the students that have difficulties with, with different parts, because our project, we really wanted to incorporate, like, everything, all different areas of, of the learning process, and what ended up coming out of it, I think, is that we created a project that was not a rough draft project, it was, it was, it was tuned, for lack of a better term, because really, when the, when the students were getting into it, it was, it was a very productive atmosphere, and the, and the students seemed to know what was going on. And one of my favorite things was when we were talking about the difficulties that students might have, is we actually got some great feedback, particularly with one of the students, and we ended up discussing him stepping in front of the camera and doing his project in front, in front of the camera, and it turned out fantastic. He was a star, star that day.
And our colleagues were very open, they gave excellent suggestions, and overall, it helped us to look at our project specifically in each little detail to make sure that we designed work that was really meaningful for our students.
Thank you for allowing us to use our voices wisely and respectfully. We hope you enjoyed our video.
At this time, we will take any questions you may have.
Okay, board members, are there questions you'd like to ask these young students tonight?
Chair, I don't have any questions, but I would like to say it was a great job. I really enjoyed it.
Ms. Chair, I also don't have any questions, but let me say, this is really what alternative education and alternative schooling should really be about. I want to applaud you, Ms. Johnson, because alternative education was never intended to be punitive, but it was to be a way to allow students who may learn in a different mode to be able to learn. And thank you for designing work for students, and thank you, students, for being a part of that design, because obviously, you've learned a lot by being involved in that. I was simply impressed with just the increased vocabulary as I listened to the words you used in your, in your presentation. Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to know, if they're in the middle of a project and their term expires, what happens then? Because I would think that we want to complete their project, it seems exciting to me.
Actually, that was one of the things that sparked the project, and so, because we have students who are scripting, Dashari Wilson actually wrote the script for, she collaborated with other students, however, that script will be there for students to follow through, but our plan is to actually record the play and to have a DVD, and that DVD will be shared with all incoming students.
I'm real proud of you, young ladies.
Excuse me, I hope we'll be invited to the final performance, because we would love to come.
Definitely.
Board members?
You hope for good work?
Yeah, thank you very much for your project.
Thank you.
At this time, it's our first public participation period, we've asked that, that you, people who'd like to speak to, to the board at this time, come forward, we ask you to keep it around three minutes, and keep it on focus and to the point. Did anyone sign up? Okay, is there someone? Come forward, state your name and, and your, where you live.
Good evening, Maria Mondino Catan, five to two, Long Point Lane, Columbia.
You need to talk up just a little bit.
My, I'm, you may recall, I emailed all of the board members, I'm just a concerned parent, a parent, I have three children in, at Baker Line Elementary, and I'm very concerned about what happened at Sandy Hook. And I'm here because I want to have, like, firsthand information, and what are you all thinking? Are we doing, how much are we doing to make our schools safer? And, and I have my opinions on what we could do, and maybe I want to share just one thing, maybe having someone who can protect our children, like an armed security guard, someone who can minimize or prevent this kind of atrocities. And I'm just here to make my voice heard. Thank you.
I'm sure many people in here share concern. Any others who would like to speak at this time? We will have a presentation on safety tonight. All right, that's, we do have one more public participation period at the end. All right, we're going to our executive session items tonight. There's no vote on student expulsion, so we've got a student appeals. Do I hear a motion about student appeals?
Chair, I make a motion that on student number one, we send them to Blythewood Academy.
Are you doing these, are you going, I mean, do you need a second on that, or is he, he paused, I'm trying to figure out if we're going to do it?
You're, you're planning on having several motions.
That's right, I have several motions all at once, I was waiting for Jill to make sure she was caught up, that's all, okay. Student number two, Blythewood Academy with Lareda. Student number three, Blythewood Academy with Lareda. Student number four is going to be pulled out separately. Student number four, number five, deny. Student number six, deny. Student number seven, deny. Student number eight, deny. Student number nine, deny. Student number 10, deny. Student number 11, uphold the appeal.
There's a motion on 10 students. Is there a second on that motion?
Second up.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote on those 10 students?
Mr. Chair, can we go back and revisit and pull out student number 11? We were on the appeals, right?
Correct.
Right, student number 11, did, I mean, I'm open for a friendly amendment, if you want to do a pullout, the recommendation that I made was for, was to uphold the appeal.
Hold it out.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Manning, could I have a friendly amendment to pull out number 11 and vote on that separately?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jill, can you redo the motion, please?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure where my brain went off to, but, did Mr. Manning give me those numbers again, please?
Yes, ma'am, I will repeat my recommendations. My recommendations are that student number one attend Blythewood Academy, student number two and number three, Blythewood Academy with Lareda. Student number four, I asked to have that one done separately. Students number five through 10, I requested to deny the appeal. And student number 11, I requested that we uphold the appeal. That's the one we just pulled. And that's the one that inspector has the friendly amendment to pull it out, number 11.
These are for us to vote.
Sergeant, do you have another amendment that you'd like to make?
I think we're just going to vote on those two separately.
Right, yeah. I just didn't know if Ms. Anderson had, if I answered her question or if she had.
Oh, you've answered my question, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so you have a vote in front of you. Does everyone, is Al, did you get?
I know.
Waving, okay. Okay, passed, seven to zero. I'm going to entertain two separate motions now, first for student number four.
I need some time.
I make a motion that we deny the appeal.
Is there a second?
I second up.
Number four's. You got that, Jill, number four? Number four deny the appeal.
Paul, this is something unusual that I'm going to do. I want a table, number four. And have that student come before us.
Okay, the table does not require a second. We got a motion on the, we do have a motion on the floor, though.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor that has to be handled now, because we have a second for it. I guess, is the option for me to amend my motion, or what are my options?
You can amend it if you would be so graciously kind enough to do that the rest of the year for me, please, sir.
All right, I, I make, Jill, I will amend my motion to ask to table student number four for.
Okay, a table requires no second, all those who've raised your right hand, table. Table, all those opposed? All right, so it is tabled, the table motion passes. So we will not, we will not deal with number four, and now we'll go to student number 11. Is there a motion for student number 11?
Chair, I make a motion that we uphold the appeal.
Do I hear a second?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that motion.
Okay.
I don't have a second.
But what's the friendly amendment?
Who's second? Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Good Lord. I would like to uphold the motion to appeal, but I'd also like to add that this student can return back to the home school on strict probation.
I second that amendment.
I second.
All right.
There's a second, so we're good.
We're good. Accepted amendment. Okay, you can vote now. Thank you. Motion passes, seven to zero. Okay, that, I believe that concludes our voting items in executive session. Am I correct? All right, number nine, old business, no action, request it update efficiency and effectiveness. Dr. Broschu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The executive staff and I would like to bring the board up to speed in terms of efficiencies and effectiveness efforts that have been underway for some time in the district, and we have a number of those in, in next several meetings, we just wanted to bring those to you as they, they are, they are happening. And with that, I would like to call on our executive staff, and we'll begin with Sue Mallette, to share those, those in her area that she has been working toward and, and what has been accomplished, and we'll just go around the, the table for the executive staff members, if we may, please.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Broschu. The first two items, 3.1 and 3.2, have to do with restructuring of our academic services division. Last semester, Dan Cobb met with our social, excuse me, our special ed folks, and we have made a recommendation, we have not presented it yet, because he is now working this spring with the other part of our academics, to look at how we can be much more efficient and effective to our schools as we continue to grow. So we're excited about that, hopefully, he'll Um, so we're excited about that. Hopefully he'll have a decision uh that we can bring or, or a recommendation that we can bring to you all um at the end of February, maybe early March. Um, in addition, he's also gonna look at our support staff that we have at the district in academics. Uh, that will be a part of his um review of academics as well. Um.
Miss Mallett, can I interrupt you for a second? Mister Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we push this item. We don't have any material to look at.
I was fixing to say, I thought I was the only one.
I mean, we don't have anything on our board docket nor have we been presented.
Oh, let me mention, this is um a revisiting of the documentation that we have given you in, um, in the past that you had asked for.
Which is fine, but nobody said we need to bring that with us. So I, I asked that we push it until we have time to have the written material in front of us. And I think the public deserves the right to see that material as well. Mister Chair, I asked that we push this till another meeting.
I agree, I think you're right. Um, and I do remember, I mean, it's part of old, it's part of old business. We're not, uh, it's something we haven't discussed before. But you're right, Mister, Mister Man, I'd like to, I'd like to have that material in front of you.
Right, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, any objections to that at this time?
No, that's fine with us.
Okay, okay, well, we'll put that on the agenda item, okay.
Thank you, and I, I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, that's fine, not a problem, thank you.
Okay, item ten, new business, no action requested. Um, update on the district's security crisis response. Doctor Brochue?
Yes, Mister Chair, we have a number of our staff members that are going to make a presentation this evening uh to the school board and certainly, hopefully, um, from the response of, uh, for our parent that came before us just a little while ago. She will have the firsthand knowledge of where we are in the district in terms of safety and security. And uh, again, this will be a brief overview. However, we have a comprehensive plan in place. And I will say that just less than a year ago, uh, we had um some assistance with consultant, uh, that is premier in our state that came and said we have one of the finest safety and security efforts available in any school district. So with that, uh, I'm gonna call on Jack Carter and, um, and Shirley Vickery and they're going to, to share.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, in light of the unfortunate incident Sandy Hook, the first thing we did was ask all of our schools to immediately pull their plans and review them and make sure their faculties knew exactly what they were supposed to do in the case of an intruder or an active shooter. And they all did that within the, the couple of days immediately after the incident. A couple of highlights here, we currently have twenty resource officers in our schools uh that come from Roanoke County Sheriff's Department. Uh, they not only have schools that they're assigned to, but they also have other schools that they are supposed to randomly visit. So each one has one, one or more schools and that's done on a geographic basis, so they can get there quickly in case there is an incident. Um, the uh, the first thing we ask all schools to do, by the way, is call nine one one. Um, and that gets the immediate response they need for people to come to their assistance. As from a district perspective, we do have a physical security staff uh that goes around primarily checking door locks and, and security on the campus. Uh, those people are also the people to direct traffic for us at, in the morning and the afternoon. For instance, we direct traffic at thirty-four different sites in the morning and thirty-seven different sites in the afternoon. Uh, and then those same people do security for athletic events or band contests or whatever event that occurs in the district where we feel like we either need parking assistance or just security. And you always see one of our security officers uh at every board meeting. About ten years ago, the district invested four million dollars in changing all the doors into classrooms uh to appropriate doors with the appropriate locking hardware so that teachers could lock their doors from the inside. That was not in the case everywhere, uh, ten years ago. Now every classroom has a door like that. Uh, every classroom has a phone. All our schools have intercoms. Fastest way to get information out is to push one button and then also with the intercom, what is going on. They all have codes that they, they should be practicing, I believe they all do. So that they say code blue or whatever the particular code they use, everybody knows what's going on. Uh, twenty-three of our schools have key, uh, pads, card pads, card key pads on doors that are frequently used uh to go in and out, like for playgrounds, uh, because the policy is all doors are, all external doors are locked. So they do have to go back and forth, so we put these, uh, we start out with key pads, we've gone to the card readers and we're continuing to add those. Eventually, we'll probably have one on every door. Um, we have two thousand and forty-eight security cameras and every school has an eight hundred uh radio, which is also directly tied, one push, uh, and you can contact our security. It's manned twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week at the, at support services and every school has one. And last but not least, every school has a lobby guard. In fact, a couple have two that allows us to control folks coming in and out of the school. They have to go through the lobby guard, get a pass and then, uh, and it also checks on a national sex offender status. Um, with that, I think I'd just go ahead and let Shirley talk and then we both be prepared to answer questions.
Sure, that works fine. Good evening. I wanna shift the focus for just a minute and talk not about security, but about our both prevention of situations that might involve some kind of behavioral difficulty within the school and also our responding to crisis situations, upsetting events within the school. Really, those are the two things that my position impacts that are in this area, very different from what Jack was just talking about. In terms of working with the prevention of behavioral difficulties and things that might erupt into crisis, we really have a very structured approach to looking at those situations, starting with a, a more of a committee that monitors all kinds of situations that may be very minor or more severe. And then moving on up through a graduated series of steps in which more upsetting behaviors and events would be staffed by a very structured team that goes through a protocol of information. And we train all of our helping professionals, administrators and school staff in how to use that assessment tool and getting to a plan that will help us look at student behaviors and concerns. That's the prevention end of it. If we have a, an upsetting event or a crisis that happens in the school, we have, um, and those things fortunately are not usually at the level of the kind of Sandy Hook situations. They are very, a quite varied set of circumstances. They might be the death of a student or the death of a staff member. It may be an automobile accident that's happened within our community, just a variety of things that happen. We have a set of very specific protocols that we actually had just revised in November of this year and have distributed to our helping professionals recently. Those things have to do with um student suicide, death of a staff member, even um teaching our staff about how to deal with allegations of child abuse and that kind of thing. The other thing that we also do is we have an after-crisis team if we have some things happening that have been upsetting in our community. I'm the after-crisis responder most of the time, but I also have other people on the team with me. And we work first with the school principal in making sure the information gets out to the right people. We talk about how to get that information to folks, what kind of information to share, how to communicate with staff, with students. It's a very structured approach to doing that and work closely with all the school staff. We also bring in additional helping professionals as we need them and we, we have a good cadre of that kind of folks in our schools now. It includes uh school counselors at every site, school psychologists at every site, school social workers who are at least part-time in every site, and also school nurses. And the four, all four of those groups work really closely together in this response. Um, woven throughout those protocols and that process we use is a lot of suggestions for principals about communication because we, we talk about needs to communicate differently with staff, with students, with parents, and we make decisions along the way about a lot of things that also in, influence Mister, work with Mister Blackstone's area. So I think that's the, do you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. Questions or comments?
Questions for, for our specialist here. Intervention in security.
Mister, uh, Mister Carter, my question is to you.
Yes ma'am.
For the benefit of the public, how often do we do our drills?
Uh, the, the protocol is the, you run your first, in the first fifteen days of school, you're supposed to run your uh, uh, active shooter, intruder drill so that everybody knows what to do at the very beginning of the year. And then about every two years, we do a complete tabletop exercise, which we actually have one planned for this, uh, this spring, where we bring everybody together. And we have big, big kits called grab and go kits, which the principals are, allows them to continue to run their school, if you will, uh, without actually being at, at their desk. Um, so unfortunately, we have enough false alarms with lockdowns that it gets exercised far more than once a year, but it's a requirement for once a year.
And that's everyone participates in that, right?
Yes ma'am. And, and let me add, I, I should have mentioned our manager of emergency preparedness and the assistant manager are both retired sheriff's deputies and are both authorized to carry weapons on campus. So effectively, we have twenty-two people uh in the district that can respond.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mister Carter, um, this is actually probably a little bit of a technology question, but I know with the voice over IP phone systems that we have, I know there's a lot of cell phones, but i- if the power's out or there's an issue, is there like a fail-safe at all with that system so that they have a phone, working phone in that room at all times or?
All of our newer schools have emergency backup power that would keep some things running. We've been working to put all of our uh technology systems to that backup power. Not all of them are there yet, but we are working to, to every school that has a backup generator that it would, it would allow the technology to stay on and the, which means the phones would stay on. Cause all our phones run through the, through the servers.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? I have a question. Um, let's say we have a, we got twenty resource officers and when I'm sick, injured, um, training, they're doing something. Is there a way that the sheriff's department gives, lends us someone to replace that? Because I'm telling you, I can see an issue here. I have never asked this question. I don't, I don't know why I haven't asked this question.
I guess the short answer is no. We do have a floater in the district that moves around to cover.
I have a floater, but I guarantee you there's signs that we need more than that.
If, if we were totally uncovered in a school, I'm sure if Chuck picked up the phone and called the Joe Polisi, that we could get some coverage. But not all officers are really trained to be resource officers.
Well, I know, it's just a short, I'm just talking about somebody for safety. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about a deterrent force. I'm not talking about, you know, trained resource officer.
We, we could get coverage. Uh, obviously again.
I think we need to do, I think we need to have that ability. I mean, we're playing for twenty officers, we're basically playing for twenty officers.
Chuck is in the back here. I mean, we could call Joe Polisi and he'd send somebody up.
I think Mister Guerak has the information regarding that.
In years past, anytime that we've had a full warning, a threat, whatever, um, the sheriff's department has cooperated with us on many occasions and increased the number of officers, even street officers, uh, the communicate, the action teams, and abundance of officers around that area. So if we call and ask them, or we call and tell them we have heard this in the community, students are bringing this information, they are very responsive.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, Friday, maybe I misunderstood your question, but Friday we had a random threat. Uh, and one phone call and we had all kinds of help on that campus to make sure nothing happened. And they were there within no time flat. So, and of course, it was a random idle threat, but you know, we take all those threats seriously.
I, I guess my point is that if we've got someone who's sick for some reason out five days, then.
They would cover us if we, if we ask.
You know, we, we just need to be able to have that assurance that there will be some help with them. I know we can't expect him to, to do things, but if we, you know, make sure we have that kind of relationship, and I know we do. Uh, I'm just not sure how that works, and that was my question. Doctor Vickery, okay, um, prevention.
Right.
Prevention. Uh, most of the shootings are basically student shootings, aren't they?
You mean students.
I mean, the, the security problems of people coming into schools are mostly students, right? Is, is that right?
Well, I think if you look at the data on the school shootings and things, they have not been actually active students in the school. They've been young adult men, though. That's my impression.
They're not, okay.
They're not actively students, the ones I'm most aware of.
Colin Bob was.
That's true, those were.
This recent shooting in Sandy Hook was not.
Was not a student.
No, Sandy Hook was, I know that. It's really all over the mountain.
Yeah. Young adult men is the thing that holds them together.
Trying to prevent adult men, I understand, that's what, I guess that's my point.
I guess there is an element of, when I mentioned the prevention things we do as, um, as school staff, we are trying to prevent things that students would do, yeah. That, that was what I was talking about, cause that's the group we work.
Need to be real focused on prevention, because you gotta prevent the right things.
Yeah, we do.
Let's not spend, we're on some areas that, let's not, areas that we're not, you know, probably not as helpful as others. But that was my only question, two questions, anybody else?
Yeah, prevention is, is big.
Mister Chair, I have one more question. I, I know we have like, don't we have a hotline that folks can call when they see things that aren't right, whether it's bullying or whatever it may be?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Do we have that well posted in the schools? Cause I, I know, I mean, I can probably walk through almost any of our schools and never see that number posted. I have no idea what it is.
Uh, I'd have to go back out. It used to, we used to give them stickers to put up all over the place. We actually changed the name of the, it used to be called the crime line. We changed it to be a little softer because we wanted to, to not be, people be afraid to use it. But it's also, goes to my, my building, which is the same number, seven three six three seven seven four. It's manned twenty-four hours a day. They can actually call either number. And uh, so there's always somebody there to talk to them if they, and we, we have gotten some heads ups on, you know, some potential incidents. Usually they don't happen, but we do get people to call us. So we might wanna go back through and make sure that those numbers are more visible. I think the primary staff at every school knows who to call. Uh, but again, as we review our plans, we'll make sure that everybody's got the information they need.
Yeah, I'm thinking students and, you know, just adults in the schools.
We do get calls from students. It's usually right before tests and they, they say it's gonna be a bomb threat, so they empty the building.
But I, I do appreciate you kind of revisiting that. I think that'd be helpful.
We will. Chuck and I'll get on that.
Mister Carter, um, using that phone number, at one time it used to be placed in the student's agenda book. Is it still?
I'd have to ask a school to address that, I'm not sure.
Cause they also used to be given like little business cards.
Little business card that we handed out. We've actually changed the business card.
So they could put.
So there are plenty of those out there. I just don't know if they're still being displayed, but I, we'll, we'll certainly check on that.
Contact on the website so they can put it on their cell phone.
I wanna thank both of you. Um, there's, I was trying to think of an answer to this lady's question about what our thoughts were as a board. Well, our thoughts as a board are the same thing as your thoughts out there. I mean, we don't have the answer. At least I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer. And I think I can speak for so, for many things, but, but we, we're gonna work as hard as we can. And we have been the premier, we have, we're, safety's been premier. Since nineteen ninety-five, I believe we started our resource program. That's not, that was unheard of, wasn't it? Right, right. Well, this is, this is a long time ago. So we've, we've been on this for a long time and, um, and this board will look at all the issues and, and we'll do the best we can.
And we are the only district in the state that has an internal security force of any kind.
Any kind. Yeah, Ori County, I'll just say, Ori County had one several years ago and the first thing they did when the budget crunch came is they cut it out. And there's a big district and they, and you would think they could afford some things too. So, but every increase is gonna take, in my opinion, gonna take educational dollars out of the classroom. And that's just gonna be a fact. Any other comments?
My only comment to add to that, Doctor Clement, would be I concur with what you were saying as far as the safety of, of District Two students. Um, people can think of all different things that you might want to do, but if somebody's gonna do something, it's pretty well you can't stop them, just like a, somebody's gonna break in your house. You're gonna have the best security system, the best of everything, and they're gonna still come in. Uh, one of the attorneys, top-notch, um, trial attorneys was held up in his home a few years ago. ago, gunpoint, and I'm quite sure his house was very secure. But, um, I, I want the public to, to truly understand that each board that I've served with, out of my years serving on the board, have always had student safety number one. And you made a statement that you had some suggestions. I would like for you to submit those suggestions so that we can review what you were saying, because I don't think there's anything that, um, humanly possible we could do that we have not done to guarantee the safety of our students and staff in this district. Because those of us serving, most of us have children or grandchildren or, or some family member, um, that's in the district. So it's not just, we're here looking over other people's children. Our children are a big concern also.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, one quick note, uh, this year we began publishing this, uh, card that we distributed to every, uh, student, actually two per student, um, that has the numbers to know and the calendar on the flip side, and the Safe Schools, uh, number is on, uh, this card. And I also believe it's in a number of our publications.
All right, thank you both of us, thank you. Uh, federal budget update. Mr. Davis, are you gonna work on that or? Dr. Broschew?
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Broschew. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the probably number one national news story, certainly going up to New Year's Eve, was the, uh, so-called fiscal cliff that the federal government was facing. And of course, the end result is, of the Reader's Digest version of the story, is that basically the president and the Congress decided to, uh, d- defer it. And basically, they've deferred it for about a month and a half till basically the middle or the end of February, when they really faced the real question, which is the federal debt ceiling. So basically, all they've done so far is to defer it. The hope is that they will in fact, um, resolve the matter, that they will, they will have to impact the federal debt ceiling in order to do so. But if they do, the good news is, we should maintain the same level of funding that we've seen from the federal programs for our Title One programs, our Title Two programs, et cetera. Uh, I, I think that's the best, or the, the, the most news I can give you tonight on the eighth of January as to what we're looking at, and other than the old failed cliche, to stay tuned. We'll see how it unfolds as far as the federal government goes. Uh, there is one budget matter I mentioned to Mr. Jackson that I've taught my staff about, I think the board should be aware of. The State Department of Education is losing a wonderful key employee by the name of John Cooley. I think many of you have seen him at school board association meetings. He's going to be leaving the department the end of this month, January thirty-first, and that is a loss, as Mr. Jackson and I have talked, to the state of South Carolina. Wonderful employee, a great friend and a great colleague, and I for one will miss him, sir. And, uh, I think our whole state will.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Davis at this time? Thank you, sir. And, uh, you gotta polish up that crystal ball a little bit, you know?
Yes, sir.
See what happens. Reserve funded capital projects is the next item. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, we have Jack Carter and Bob Davis will be reviewing those for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Broschew. Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in just a moment, I'm gonna ask, uh, Jack Carter to walk you through some projects that we are recommending to you that we fund using our district's reserve fund. Uh, you'll recall just several months ago, when we were looking at the enhancements we wanted to do at Richland Northeast High School, you'll recall that part of it was to be funded out of our eight percent funding. Part of it was to be funded from our district reserve fund as we proposed it, and part of it was to be funded from the contingency left over from the capital projects we had just completed at Richland Northeast. And with that, the board agreed to do Phase One, and you approved that and we proceeded. But the board asked us to come back to you when we got ready for Phase Two. Now, tonight, the only thing we're presenting to you is those projects that the administration, Dr. Broschew, is recommending that we fund from the reserve fund. We will come back to you probably at your first meeting in February with the eight percent proposal, so you can see which of those projects are to be funded, uh, as well from that piece. Uh, but let me just talk a little bit about the reserve fund for the board's information. Our reserve fund balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, the audited financial statements you just saw at your meeting in November was thirty million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's your total reserve fund balance. And you'll recall that by board policy, the reserve fund should be between seven and fifteen percent of our general fund budget. That thirty million dollar, uh, fund balance is currently fourteen point one percent of our general fund budget. The projects we're recommending to you tonight to fund from the reserve fund, total sum two million, four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. And those are listed in the sheet that was included in your board packet. And again, Mr. Carter's gonna give you the details on it. If the board approved that, we would reduce the fund balance to twenty-seven million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, which would be right at thirteen point, uh, thirteen percent of our general fund balance. Again, it's actually twelve point nine seven percent, if I may be precise. But with that as a lead in, I'd like for Mr. Carter again, and again, we're presenting this as information tonight, we're not asking the board to vote and approve it, but I'd like him to discuss the projects we're proposing to fund with our reserve fund balance. Mr. Carter?
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, in Phase Two, the big, the big items in Phase Two at Richland Northeast are actually redoing the parking lot and relocating the main gate and relighting that parking lot. There's some other, some other things with fencing and all, but those are the, that's really the biggest items that are in there. And then, and then within that is some money for upgrades in the media center as well. Center for Knowledge, uh, as you can see, we're, we'll have fifteen portables out there. Uh, fourteen of those are in place. We have one more to move. We're gonna move that right after Martin Luther King, uh, holiday, that, the week right after that. Uh, that will, what you see on there, the total seven forty-four includes, uh, right at ninety-seven thousand dollars for technology, and the rest of it is the actual movement of the portables, the, uh, which I fronted out of another fund until I can repay myself. Uh, sidewalks, uh, awnings, fencing, playground, the stuff that we would typically do when we set up a center, very similar to what we had when we had the original CFK and what we had the original CFI. Go to the next slide, Ridgeview, we've been working on this, uh, some upgrades here. Ridgeview needs a concession stand down by their softball and baseball field. We also need better handicap accessibility, uh, to that area. Right now, it's a, we do have a drive down there, but there's no parking. It's a one-way drive. We're gonna expand that, um, and then we're gonna do some, I, I guess cosmetic things to dress up the front of the athletic area. Next slide. Uh, the STEMS program at Summit Parkway Middle School, which you previously approved, asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for startup equipment. That's robotic science, uh, related kits, items that they need to get started in the program. And then finally, uh, the technology, this is to upgrade what we do here with, uh, all of our video stuff for board meetings.
And ladies and gentlemen, if I may, in addition to, that's the reserve funded piece we're proposing. You'll recall that, again, there will be an eight percent proposal we'll be bringing to you later. Uh, Mr. Carter, at Richland Northeast, there's a nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar price tag for the eight percent portion of the Richland Northeast portion, which will be a total of one point five million, reserve fund and eight percent. And at Ridgeview, we've got the five hundred and sixty-two thousand remaining from the contingency at Ridgeview, plus the eight seventy-two, so that'd be a one point four million dollar total for Ridgeview from those two funds. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That was my question.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Okay, any, um, any questions for Mr. Carter? Now, remember, um, you can call it, uh, reserves, you can call it a fund balance, whatever you wanna call it, it's the same thing, right? Am I correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, this is money we have in the bank.
That's correct.
For information tonight, any questions? If not called, uh, feel free to call, Mr. Davis, please.
At your service.
You have my permission, right?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one question?
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Carter, um, under Ridgeview, it's at two, let's see, wait a minute, I can't really see, at a small plaza between the softball and baseball field.
Basically a concrete pad with some benches. It's right, there's a, there's kind of a finger peninsula that runs down between the two fields. There's an existing concession stand, but it never gets used, cause it's, you gotta walk up twenty-five steps to get to it. So we've got space down by the fields to give them appropriate concessions and bathrooms, uh, very similar to what we did at, uh, Spring Valley when we redid Harry Peron Stadium. We added some concessions and bathrooms for Spring Valley. This is basically, myriad and that. And we just, there was an opportunity to put a little plaza right between the two for people to sit and watch either game that's going on. So, and that's a very inexpensive piece of this, I promise you.
And we still, we did make it accessible for a wheelchair, or is it still where people have to drive someone down?
Uh, no, it, it's always been accessible, uh, but it's a very, very, very long sidewalk that comes down from the very far right side of the football field, if you will. So s- a, a handicapped person could get down there, then they gotta go around the sidewalk, around the end of the track, and then there is no access down to baseball or softball. And that, you know, when the school got built, I, not sure why that happened, but it didn't. This actually gives us handicap parking and drivable handicap access. And what, and another advantage is also gives us emergency vehicle access down there, which we currently don't have.
That, that's one of my concerns. I wanna make sure we're able to get a vehicle down or people that.
Exactly.
The stairs are steep. I don't even like walking on them.
Yeah, I don't either. So this, this will fix a long-term problem we've had with accessibility down there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Jack, um, first I'd like to say, I like, I'm happy to see the Ridgeview items. You know, we started looking at, um, at facilities at Richland Northeast. I noticed that Ridgeview also had some deficiencies. Um, I certainly would not want to take my daughter to the restroom out there at the Ridgeview Athletic Facility if, if need be, but, um, does this keep us on track with the Richland Northeast projects between this and the eight percent? Or are we filling out the full second phase that was originally proposed?
Everything that's in Phase Two, for the most part, has to be done in the summer. Uh, digging up the parking lots, relocating the gates, that all has to be done when there are no students around, or at least where we can, like for Tri-Dak, Tri-Dak, we can push them to the, the, the cap into the campus, so they can use that area for parking, they'll use that for access, cause the rest of it will cut off. Uh, but yeah, we're, we should be fine. I mean, we, we're close to ready to have bid documents. I'm just not ready to commit to bid documents until I have the money that I know of.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that's what I meant was the money, not the time.
No, we're, we, we should be fine on the eight percent timeline, um, to, to make all those, to make those windows.
So not just timeline, but financially, we're able to fund all the second phase?
This funds everything in the second phase.
Okay, thank you.
This also, in, in the second phase for Richland Northeast includes concessions for baseball and softball, which they don't currently have either.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Now that we have enough reserve fund, will you turn the heat on, please?
I did call him and ask him, I, it was, it was warm down the other end of the building, it's cold in here, I don't know what's going on.
I don't know what's going on.
Oh, they also have a sweat nice.
We're just about to get out of here.
Okay, my back is cold now, my feet are getting cold. Can't afford to be sick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. Uh, agenda item is for our next meeting or future meetings, which will be held, uh, January the twenty-second at the Illright Middle School. Any, uh, Dr. Broschew, what do we have on the agenda?
For future meetings, we have student learning report, an update, again, dealing with district security and crisis response. We're going to continue to give several of those over the course of the next several months. Uh, proposal, uh, for revisions of a few policies, Policy AD, School District Mission, Policy IA, Instructional Goals and Learning Objectives, and Policy JA, which is Student Policies, Goals, Priority, Objectives. And then we will be seeking approval for the capital reserve funded projects that we just reviewed. Uh, we will be seeking approval for an appointment to, uh, the Board of Assessment Control, and we will be hearing a report regarding the backup of security and security data that we, uh, have been promising to bring to you.
Are there any other items the board members would like to place for the future, um, for items in it?
I didn't forget about my, um, Center for Achievement on the southern end of the district, right? That's not, that's coming up, it doesn't have to be in the next board meeting, but you are working on that, right?
I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson.
The Center for Achievement.
Yes.
Southern end of the district.
Okay, other? Yeah, we'll have to, let's put the deficiency study back on, um, with, with the adjени- adjoining documents, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a unusual suggestion or, or?
Is it legal?
You know me.
Okay, I go.
Um, since Mr. Jackson, you know, Chip started, started this, um, survey, would it be appropriate to have him work with you on the agenda so you guys can get together and see what it is, so you can take up where he left off as chair? I know all of us as board members have the right to, you know, ask questions and all that, but I'm not sure if there's something, uh, where he was going with it that we need to have him to, um, follow through with? Is that okay for me to ask that of you?
Sure.
Sure, absolutely.
I was, I was definitely planning on that.
Absolutely. Okay, and that way, because I think it was a very good idea that we, we got this going, so I don't want it to just, your. Absolutely. Your goals fall by the wayside, because you're no longer chairman.
Well, I think there were some action steps in that.
That's correct.
In that plan that we were gonna do, so.
That's correct.
And, and absolutely.
Absolutely. So if you guys work together.
Continue on with that.
Maybe a couple of the board meetings you may be able to attend, I mean, not meetings, but agenda setting times, and you guys work together so that we continue to.
Sure.
Reach our goals. Thank you.
Any other issues, items?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask the superintendent on their district, um, security and crisis response? I know I stepped out, um, cause I needed to speak with that family, but can we also, um, if you can kind of report back to the board within that report on how the interest weighs are into each school, where everything's located, so we can kind of look at revamping the body, cause I wanna call lobby guards, those, um, lobby guards.
Lobby guards, okay.
Jeez, Barbara.
Yes.
I wanna see a, I wanna see a good report on that.
Wait a minute, we're not, just, they couldn't hear on that end, and I couldn't hear either.
Oh, I'm just asking, Susan, that they add, um, information back to the entire board on where the lobby guards are in each one of the schools, how it's located, cause I think we might need to revamp and move some of that around.
We'll go check, cause they're supposed to be right where the rece- the receptionist's is sitting, so they can monitor. We'll go back and confirm that they haven't shifted them around.
And when did you say that, oh, I'm sorry. When did you say they were gonna have that, uh, the drill, the next drill?
We hadn't scheduled it yet, we're gonna have to work through it. We're actually gonna talk about it, hopefully tomorrow at, uh, Key Leaders, to try to make sure we schedule it when it fits all the school's schedule. They've all gone and reviewed all their plans. We did that, we, they all did that immediately after the incident, but what we wanna do is bring them all together in one room, so that everybody's getting exactly the same message at the same time.
And, and Mr. Carter, that's the, that's the desktop exercise we're talking about for the spring. And we would involve the sheriff's department, the fire department, AMS, all the players are, are at that desktop.
Bring all the key, all the key people that would be first responders and whatever to the table.
And do we need to revisit whether we can, um, keep this on a every-two-year schedule, or if we need to do it annually because of the turnover in the district?
We can do it annually. I mean, it's, we've just been doing it every couple of years, cause there hasn't been that much change, but it's, it's not hard to.
I would like to see us do it annually, because sometimes we as humans get complacent.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We have to remind them.
Probably could do it annually for those people who may get complacent, like, you know, some of us do, or for new people, turnover. So, let's look at doing this annually, and I think that would, you know, like you have to have a fire drill, I guess you guys have to have fire drills.
Well, that's, they're required to have those as well, earthquake drills, those are all kind of required things.
Well, that's, those are required, and I'm saying have this required annually versus every two years.
And I think probably we need to move it up to the fall instead of the spring so we catch them at the beginning of the year.
Right, that's a really, really good idea, beginning of school.
And honestly, Mrs. Anderson, I don't think it would hurt us as board members to know what to do in case there's an emergency.
I know what to do.
You're talking about here or at the school?
Well, I mean, we know to duck, when, you know, whatever, but I wouldn't know where to go in here, other than probably under the table or whatever. I don't know what I would do, so I, it probably wouldn't hurt...
No, that's a good idea.
...myself to have some training on which way we should exit. Do we go that way, that way?
You don't exit, you go down, stay low, always stay low.
Well, I tell you what, we'll, uh...
That's what I'm saying.
I, I'll go with the executive staff and we might come up with like a little cheat sheet for you and then conduct some training as well.
Yeah, because I mean, we go from different schools to different sites and I have, I don't have a clue.
Glad to do that.
I'm not embarrassed to say I don't have a clue.
Well, corrections always taught us, don't run, stay low and keep your mouth shut.
But you know what, that's impossible probably for me.
Okay, okay, I think we've got enough to talk the truth on for the future. Thank you. Okay, this is our second time of public participation. Does anyone at this time want to address the board? Okay, seeing no hands go up, I'm going to move on to board superintendent comments. I'm just going to start from my right, Ms. Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, hopefully everyone had a wonderful, uh, break during the, um, holiday season. Hopefully, everyone started out on a good two thousand and thirteen. I want to commend Mr. Jackson for an outstanding job as chair. Enjoyed working under your leadership.
Thank you.
And to, uh, our new officers, congratulations. And, um, I just look forward to us having a wonderful two thousand and thirteen and hopefully people will understand that this district is as safe as any district can be. Uh, but you cannot ever guess what human minds are going to do. You know, when families are killing family members and the world is just really in uproar, um, I feel that we are very safe in our district, but you can't guess, debate what the human mind will have someone to do, so just know that we do not take safety, um, we take it very seriously in our district. Thank you.
Respect.
I also want to say I'm glad to see everybody back on a new year. Um, and safety has been an issue. It's, it's been an issue since the day I was, started on the board and way before that because of my children being in the school. Um, I sit here myself and wonder what would happen with us sitting in here tonight. Um, if they have the right equipment, it doesn't matter where they are, it's going to, they're going to take us out. All we can do is pray and hope every child, every teacher, staff member is safe during the day, no matter where you are, whether it's at a mall, even in your home, your car. Sometime I wonder about these people that drive. If you don't drive fast enough, they start running you over. I wonder sometime if somebody's going to ride up beside me and start shooting. I mean, it's starting to get that. I'm starting to feel that, just even around me. So, um, all we can do is sit here and pray for each other and, um, just always look over your shoulder. Don't always think you're safe anywhere you go. Great reports tonight, students did a great job, and I look forward to seeing more from the students as we go on to the new year.
Respect. Mr. Jackson?
Oh, and also, great job, Jack.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, let me congratulate you, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman and Secretary for, um, I'm certain what will be another outstanding year as, as our leaders, and I look forward to, to working under you. I'm really excited about the new format of our board meeting agenda. I think having a consent agenda will help in a tremendous way by giving staff the time they need to present on what we really here to talk about, and that is student academic performance. I think giving them an opportunity to have, and giving us an opportunity to have some discussion in detail and in depth about student learning, uh, without feeling rushed, um, because we're dealing with some, um, other less-than-important issues, I think will go a very, very long way. I was extremely excited to hear Ms. Johnson and her students' man aboard present. Uh, when I was working in another capacity and we first started alternative schools in the state, they were never intended to be punitive. They were always intended to be an altern, in another option, another way of students' learning. Unfortunately, they turned punitive and, and for many districts, that's the only way they've been used. And so, to see those students tonight present such an outstanding presentation on a student learning project in an alternative setting, I think is outstanding. I'm not sure to answer to your question, Ms. Anderson, because I think, I thought I heard your question being, what's going to happen to those students who are now so on fire when they go back to their original schools with these projects that they're working on? And so, I'm like you, I'm wondering, I certainly hope that there will be an opportunity for those students who may have come there without that talent to have that talent further cultivated and developed. So, I'm really excited about what's happening, and I think the, uh, presentation tonight reflects the outstanding work where, uh, Dr. Broschu, you and others, I think, have turned the corner in making sure that the student focus, uh, is there, even though it may be done in a different way. You're designing relevant work for students and by students, so I'm excited about that. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for the, uh, and Ms. Carter, for the information on our reserve fund balance and, and to answer Mr. Manning's question that, yes, we can finish Richland Northeast project and fund Ridgeview High School at the same time. I heard him slip that in, but, uh, I want you to know that I'm happy to know that both can be done. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I appreciate that we had a moment of silence tonight because it gave me a chance to pray for our students and our teachers and for my own children who are on and off airplanes, wherever they are. Um, they call me and keep me up to date so I can stay nervous. Anyway, moment of silence is ours. And also want to welcome Ms. Johnson and her son. It looks like you brought your son, is he at the Citadel? We're glad to see another Johnson.
Glad you're here. Um, with the tragedy that happened over the holiday, it gave me a chance to sort of think and, um, wonder about how it could be different or how it happened. And on a personal level, I feel like there's far too much violence in the media, uh, violence on television, violence in movies. Um, I don't know if you ever sit back and watch it and wonder why is it entertainment to other people, um, when it is so vicious and so dangerous and so deadly, always deadly? And so, those are things that bother me. And then, the use of technology, kids are sitting at home in sort of a silent environment, no contact with other people, uh, no conversations, this silent environment of watching and reading and looking, and I don't think it's healthy. Um, and so, those are things I think as a school dis, district, we could ponder. Um, uh, it's not like picking up the phone and calling somebody or meeting someone out for coffee or, it's not even getting together with other people. I think contact with human people is so important and so vital to our feeling of importance or acceptance or, so these are things I think as a school dis, district, we could ponder and things that I've been thinking about. Certainly, how did that boy, um, you know, get into so much trouble? His mother had left for four days, he was alone. I mean, there are so many reasons, so, um, those are just sad realities, but, um, you know, I hope they're things that we can think about and consider, and maybe as a school district, we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to just say Happy New Year to everyone. I'm excited to be here to start a new year. Thank you for coming out. Also, to Mrs. Johnson, to Anna Ward, to the students. I appreciate the presentation, it was awesome, and I look forward to coming to visit the school to see great things that's going on inside the school building.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Uh, thank you. I want to say, Mr. Jackson, I wasn't worried so much we didn't have enough to fund both as I, I actually was excited to see Ridgeview on the list and just wanted to make sure there were no surprises with any changes to, uh, Richland Northeast, but, um, I'd, I'd also like to, uh, challenge us as a board as we move into the, this new year. Um, I, I think in past years, we, we've sort of let slip some of the goal-setting for us as a board and for the superintendent and the direction where we're going. Um, and I'd really like to see us sort of jump right on that. We just finished the Dr. Broschu's evaluation. Um, I'd like to see, uh, maybe Dr. Broschu can present us with what she feels like the goals need to be or something, but, but jump on that so that we have direction very quickly, um, kind of coming out of that evaluation and, and where we're going to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, both as a board, um, I think we need goals and, and some checks on us, too, um, to evaluate our effectiveness. Um, but, uh, so, I, I'd like to see that happen. Um, Happy New Year to everybody and, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Dr. Broschu?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody back from the winter break, and I am certainly excited about the work that we've already accomplished thus far this year and look forward to great things continuing in every single classroom for every one of our students. Uh, as you heard tonight, we are very concerned about, uh, providing a safe and nurturing and learning environment, and it is truly a top priority in Richland School District Two. Uh, I'm also proud to announce this evening that our National Board Certified Teachers, we received some news today that our district is now leading the state in the number of new National Board Certified Teachers, and it also is the number-one, uh, district as far as overall national certified board teachers. So, really something very exciting for us today to, to share. Um, and it says a lot about the caliber of our teachers that we have in our classrooms, but it also says a tremendous amount about the commitment that this board has in terms of, uh, finding ways to supplement those individuals in a way that they should be. So, I really want to commend the board on that for a longstanding tradition. And finally, uh, I want to congratulate our new chairman and other officers and wish us all well for the two thousand and thirteen, uh, year as we continue to move forward and take our district to the next level. And Mr. Jackson and, um, obviously, Ms. Brill and Mr. Manning, thank you for all your work in the prior year. It has really been a true pleasure and, um, really grateful to have served. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. I'll have very brief comments tonight, and I'm only, only going to, one subject, and that's, uh, Chip Jackson's leadership. Uh, I've really enjoyed it. I mean, if I, as I watched Chip this year, I said, uh, I said, you know, I had no idea, I didn't know Chip that well, but what I see in Chip is, is, you know, he's a servant. And you can, you know, there's no power game here with Chip. And I, and that I just saw all year long, and Chip, thank you for your service as chairman. I mean, you truly, truly did a good job. Thank you, Bill. I'd like to say you didn't make any mistakes.
No, I made mistakes.
I'm teasing with, but you're, so you are, you're servant heart, and I just really appreciated myself. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair, that's why he keeps the Senator in check down at Babel Way. Ask Daryl. Look at him blushing on that one. But, um, I, I just wanted to say that, um, Mr. Carter, I'm not sure who's responsible for the net being put up over at EL Wright, uh, right out by the Center for, um, Knowledge, but that net, I have complained about that ever since I, I moved over there because the ball would always come out in the streets, so whenever you guys finally got that net up.
George Gooch made that happen.
Well, given my...
Now, they see if they can kick it over the top of the net, but...
They have.
They're trying.
Oh, well, I, I think, I'm just so glad to see that, that up because it really bothered me that one of those children at one, one time was going to go over that fence, and the cars come around that curve quite fast, and I wanted to make sure I mentioned, uh, I'm very pleased to see that, another safety factor.
Okay, I believe that concludes our business for tonight. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
Second.